Good. Study session meeting, Tuesday, January 25th. We'll start by having roll call.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilwoman Tenny.
Here.
All are present.
Great, all are present. We'll be considering three different issues at this study session. The first one will be the American Rescue Plan Act. Second will be proposed amendments to the city code, Chapter 8-2 Right of Way. And then the last one will be a presentation regarding the draft 2022 water policy that was begun at our last session, and we intend to conclude it at this session. So I'll remind the members of the city council that we are operating under our agreed policy, city policy, and also Robert's Rules of Orders. So please make an effort to be recognized so we can move this meeting along expeditiously and in an effective manner. So at this point, we'll begin with the American Rescue Plan Act issue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an update. We did this on December 25th. We talked about the rules and the preliminary guidance that had come out in May of last year. Council at that point directed that they wanted to get some public input on what we had discussed, possibilities for spending. But as we were preparing that, the federal government decided to issue the final rules for the COVID state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is the SLFRF, which I'm not going to say that again, but that's specifically where our funding comes from, and that's where the final rules were issued. It's part of the ARPA, but if you're actually looking for the final rules, you need to look specifically for the state and local fiscal recovery funds. So in short, on January 16th of '22, they came out. They take effect April 1st of '22. Lot more broader flexibility, especially for the smaller recipients. And the city of Prescott, again, received $5.9 million. That's below the $10 million limit that they're calling significant. So some of the big, there's a lot of factors. They loosened up all the categories for the small recipients like we are. The most specific, which is what we're basically proposing, is we can replace lost revenue by just saying, "We're replacing lost revenue." We no longer have the complex formula that the IRS came out with. By doing that, yeah, by doing that, it allows us to use the funds to cover the cost of basic public service, freeing up other funds to do whatever projects or things the council wants to do with those funds. Again, I'm also here today with Melissa Busby from my office, who has done all the research on this. So if you have specific questions, we can call the expert up.
Now, Mark, I know it says here that there will be streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. Can you describe what they are still?
We talked about all the compliance requirements and the fact that they had categorized these all as high-risk for single audits. It's basically an annual report, I believe, is all we will have to file. It will have to be part of our single audit report, our schedule of federal expenditure, federal fund, or CIFA, which is something that's audited each year, but a lot less compliance, a lot less reporting to the federal government, which makes it easier to administer on our side of the thing.
So we'll just include a subsection regarding these particular funds and how they were allocated or spent?
Well, when we're proposing that we just call it replacement of local revenues and use it to cover services, freeing up funds for council to consider other potential expenditure areas.
Very good. Thank you.
And, like I say, I'll go through this thing. It's very similar to what happened with AZ CARES. That was part of the CARES Act through the state, basically what we did with that. Again, governmental services is looking at what we're going to cover with these costs. That'd be police, fire, public safety, also just public administration, freeing up the funds. So some of the areas we discussed last time and some new ones that staff would like to talk to you about. We talked a little about facility improvements. We still think those are important. Tenant improvements over at New City Hall. And again, tenant improvement's not a great word, but it kind of describes what's going on, since it's our building, technically. Not tenant improvement, it's just improvements. But that would be, you know, the new city hall, the other remodeling that has to be done over there. It's going to be significant. I mean, right now, that market is hard to get workers in. It's the cost of everything. We've budgeted $1 million this year as we start working through some of these things for all three floors. It's clearly not probably going to be enough. So we have that. We have a drill ground, public safety drill ground improvements, that has been part of the budget for the last couple of years, and it just, it never gets the priority it needs. And it was one of the projects we had to freeze this year after council, not council, but the city purchased the W parcel. When the city purchased the W parcel, that used up all the general fund, fund balance, except for the operating reserves. In addition to that, we had to freeze a couple of projects, just a few, and this was one of them, to keep that operating fund balance intact. So what that means is that an assigned fund balance that we have each year is basically our savings account to take care of large capital expenditures that exceed the operating revenues in any particular year. Public Safety Drill Ground is a good one of those. Some of these recreation service improvements that Mr. Baines would like to see out there, which include improving the tennis courts at Ken Lindley, resurfacing, turning part of them into pickleball courts, Bill Valley improvements on some concrete work out there on a very old field. A mobile command center, which has been on public safety, police department's radar for a long time, another thing that keeps getting pushed again now with less fund balance. If we're going to get one anytime soon, this would be a possibility to use some of those funds. A 75-foot aerial fire ladder truck has been on the capital plan because the current 75-foot aerial ladder truck is close to 25 years old and will no longer be able to be certified in two years. And it takes about two years to build a fire truck. So it's one of those things, are things we're bringing forward that would really be needed. They're needed, obviously, with what we did to protect the airport and purchase the W parcel. There isn't going to be fund balances. We start looking at this year's budget. When we do our mid-year and two council meetings, we'll talk a little more about that. Another option the city has, excuse me, this gets me so choked up, is to look at paying off the internal loan for the original purchase of the city hall, of the new city hall. About $4.9 million left on that. As you remember, we've been putting funds that we get from sale of properties out there. Just kind of as, just a quick recap, the initial loan was $7.5 million. You can see, we sold the main society for $600,000. That reduced that. We sold part of the W parcel for $1.6, $1.7 million. That reduced it. And we've had one debt payment, the December 31st debt payment, that brought it down to Always open space needs out there, you know, depending on what's available, whether this is more land in the granite, granite dells in that area, which has been discussed, regional park, that type of stuff. Another use that there isn't going to be huge funds available for, and again, additional airport protection that might be out there. And last time, we talked about wastewater, water, and stormwater projects. Those are still an option. So we just wanted to bring back the good news, that we have a little more latitude on what to do with these funds. I guess get a little direction from council as far as not sure how to go out to public for comment until we got a little better idea of where council wants to spend them. I mean, a general call to where would you guys like to spend money to the public? I don't think we'll give council the input it's looking for, as opposed to giving them a list of potential uses.
I have a question, Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you. Mark, I'll give you a chance to catch your breath there.
I'm fine.
So I'm looking at some of these items, and I think, I guess my general sense is there's not enough money to do all of any of these items. And so I think we probably need to be judicious in how we allocate money, because if we just took all the money to pay off the internal loan to the New City Hall, that would take up a large majority of the money that's being awarded. So I guess my thought that might be useful for me to see is a more comprehensive list that kind of itemizes these things and attaches costs associated to them. And I understand your point about some things are kind of nebulous, like open space, like we don't know what we don't know about that, right? But even some of the things like stormwater projects, like what do those look like and what are those expenses?
Well, there's a lot of stormwater projects out there. Stormwater is one of those things that the city does not have a dedicated revenue for. If the stormwater project does not relate to a street, we really have no funding for it, if it's just other things. We've looked at three projects, Penn Eastwood, which is about $1.8 million, Bud Sage and Pulliam Douglas, and those were relatively small. Altogether, it was just under $2 million for those stormwater projects. The tennis courts was about 200, 300, $300,000 for the tennis courts, and the Bill Valley field improvements were about 80, as I recall. So about 380 for the recreation improvements there. The tenant improvements, again, is kind of an unknown, like open space.
Right.
And the Public Safety Drill Ground was budgeted at 1.3. Initial costs look like it might be closer to 1.5, I believe.
I mean, it sounds like we're getting really close to $10 million at this point.
And we don't have 10.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess that's, my point, I think, and I'm just kind of thinking about this, if we do go to public comment, it might be nice for people to know that, from my perspective, when getting community input for making my decision about this, I would like to know kind of, okay, here's where you can kind of put priorities, and here's what our costs associated. And maybe if we put money towards paying off the loan, we don't have to put the entire $4.9 million towards that. Maybe we just dedicate $1 million to doing that, since we have other revenue streams to pay off that. But other items, like you mentioned stormwater, that don't have dedicated revenue sources, maybe there's an opportunity to deal with those in this one-time, one-off of money. That's just, those are my thoughts. I'd just like to see a little bit more detail on some of this stuff.
Very good. Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to stress that before we make any final decisions, we need to hear from the public and get some public input, and that's why we're having a study session. So I ask the public out there to please express yourselves and let us know what you feel we should place this money into. When I reviewed the guidance from the U.S. Treasury, they specifically did mention that due to COVID, parks, open space, trails, outdoor activities, were going to become much more important because COVID, this was, we're entering into our third year, and it's obvious that we need to start adapting and accepting it and planning for it. So with that in mind, I think maybe we can look at the Granite Creek corridor that's been delayed, and maybe we can hurry it on with some funding for that. And also, I'm the liaison for the Adult Center, and the Adult Center, because of COVID, has been suffering, and they are rebranding and remaking themselves into now more of a community center for people of all ages, because people seem to think of it more as a senior center. And they need to adapt and have more outdoor space, so they would like to have a Ramada. And you have to remember, they're on a huge tract property that was planned for a park that was supposed to have a playground, a track, and outdoor activities out there. So with that in mind, I just think that maybe we need to get more input from the public. And first of all, and also let me mention that the CARES Act funding that we got initially wasn't all of that put into the public safety budget initially 100% for police and fire.
It was used to cover those expenses, and the fund balance was used by council for other projects.
Right.
A big chunk of was for the, I actually have it here. It was, we used $200,000 for the COVID vaccination site, and this slide was from a presentation we did on the 21st of December. Center for the Future 92 Granite, North Granite Creek area plan was 376. And of course, tourism was a 60,000 special contract, and then a portion of the W parcel basically used that up. And then the remainder of the W parcel, the 5.6, came from the reserve and 1.8 from frozen projects in this budget year.
Okay, thank you for that breakdown. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. So just a couple of really quick questions. Would you mind? Oh, so, and maybe this might be directed at the mayor. Mr. Mayor, did we, when we decided to go out to the public, I thought the last conversation we had was to limit sort of, here are the options, like we're looking at four or five options, or are we leaving? Seems like it would be more productive if we had four or five, this is what we'd like to spend, or these are our proposals with specific projects, and then put it out for a vote, or it just seems like a blanket request to the public might be worrisome to me, at least, if it seems like it's our jobs to sort of say what's best for the city.
I would agree with that. I think opening up a big pot of dollars here for everybody's wish list could be a huge, huge undertaking. And with that, I recall an experience where I was providing some hospital garments to a hospital in Santa Rosa, California, and the department heads wanted all the nursing staff to pick out the colors. So rather than limit it to maybe three color choices per department, it turned into a, instead of a three-month project, it was a year and a half, because everybody fought over what color they wanted, and it was just almost a nightmare. So being able to limit the choices based upon an assessment of the priority needs, I think, would be a much more efficient way of moving this discussion forward. So like Councilman Montoya was saying, identifying the cost, identifying the importance and the priority, how much or how completely some of these high-priority issues could be funded, and then possibly having some remaining funds for maybe lower priority issues would probably get us to a decision a lot faster.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess with that, would council like to put together that priority list, or would you like staff to do it? Well, I think some of these recommendations could probably be quantified for dollar amounts. Initially, when I saw the 75-foot ladder truck here, I wasn't aware of the fact that we're almost at the point where it has to be done.
Yeah.
Because if we're going to lose certification within two years, and I know some of those major vehicles now are taking longer and longer to put in an order and have them completed, that all of a sudden becomes a higher priority, in my estimation, for public safety. So I think we would probably want to hear from staff, and then I think each one of our council people ought to pick out maybe two or three items that they would consider a high priority. We'll collect all those and then establish a priority list, maybe have one last discussion where the public might be able to weigh in, and then we'll decide.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further? No.
Mayor, you do have public comment in the Zoom?
Can I just ask a quick question? Mark, timing-wise, when do we have to have these projects financed by or contracted by?
Committed by the December 31st, 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
And paid for by the December 31st, 2026. I keep looking to the experts.
Where we can put values on these, we will. Like, obviously, the recreation services projects, it's easy to do.
Yeah, we have values all the way down to the loan. I mean, open space is kind of open-ended and.
So is airport protection.
Airport protection.
We can give you water and wastewater, and we could have water, wastewater projects, and stormwater maybe put in priority lists, up to, you know, the total amount of money, and then they could pick and choose off of that, so.
Well, again, I.
Understand what I mean. Yeah.
Councilwoman Hall, you have one last comment?
Yes, the tenant improvements, do we have a ballpark for that?
We keep looking for one, but we don't, and it's because of the market and the cost of materials. But we should have something for the third floor for the next meeting.
Okay.
So that could be a number that we can attach to this as we go out to the public.
Okay.
How much it would be for the third floor TI's.
Yeah, because I see on here that we have the internal loan, but I guess it seems kind of counterproductive to have that as an item, and then also our tenant improvements as an item. I mean, wouldn't we want to make a decision as a council whether it's the priority to pay down the building or pay for our, I mean, if we don't pay for the tenant improvements, we're still going to just do an internal loan, right? So.
Unless we think we have the cash on hand.
Well, and it gets difficult, because the fund balance is pretty well gone. So it would have to be another internal loan or an outside loan, I mean, at some point.
Right, so if we're at 1% on our internal loan, it just doesn't seem like that's a plausible thing to even have on the options list, or am I misunderstanding?
No, it was, these were just put up there for discussion. I mean, I, yeah.
And it's been, Councilwoman Hall, the previous council and some of the members of the council that are still here have always said that they wanted to pay down the debt as a number-one priority, and we just thought as a staff, having that as one of these options was only fair and appropriate under those circumstances. Am I putting words in?
I think in this case, this is kind of a unexpected funding source, that the previous council had a priority for paying down the cost of the acquisition of the hall. So look at that as a separate decision. And then the TI investments now, we have a different funding source, so being able to keep those probably separate is reasonable.
So the intention wouldn't be to have an internal loan payoff as an option for the public? We would be, because like I said, we're kind of trying to eliminate down to four or five options and then putting that out to the public for like a vote, or it's going to be, I guess I'm just trying to understand the public comment.
Maybe it would be valuable, and then I think we need to answer, obviously, Councilwoman Hall's question, but if we put numbers associated with many of these as humanly possible, we had the breakdown of the TI's, and we had a breakdown of the $4.9 for the next meeting. At that point, do you guys think you could whittle it down to something we could put in front of the public? Because I think maybe that's valuable versus us speculating on this over the next two weeks.
Yeah, I think we really have to narrow this down so it doesn't get so broad that we never get a decision, and we end up with a lot of disappointed people. All right.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
I just wanted to, I guess, kind of piggybacking on Councilwoman Hall's point, I think, don't we have, before this money showed up from ARPA, we kind of had a plan, the city had a mechanism for paying off that loan by utilizing the sale of other properties. And so I guess to me, I would, for what it's worth for me, I don't know that I would want to see it eliminated as an option, but I don't know that that, it's great to know that it's an option now, I think, but I, from my perspective, I don't know that it's high priority.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that it's great to involve the public. I'm not sure if the public has the background to really look at these items and know which are most important for the city. They certainly have an idea of what's important to them.
Right.
But I don't want to play Mother May I every time we run into a situation like this. I think that we're up here to make big boy, big girl decisions, and that's what the public expects from us, and they expect us to do things in the best interests of the city. So, you know, as much as I want to respect the public, I also think that I need to put the public in perspective and understand that there are things that they're not privy to, and that, you know, we need to stand up and put our big-boy pants on and make decisions on. So, you know, that's what I have to say.
Hence our call to the public option, too.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, but I would just like to say that I have been so impressed with the creativity and the knowledge of public input that I've received, and that I would like to encourage it. And I think that we should tell people that these are some suggestions, but it's not limited to these suggestions, and I think we might be surprised at what they come up with. And as far as the city hall, we already have an income stream that's earmarked for the city hall, and we have two nice, big properties up for sale, McCormick Street and this property. And I think we could use the funds better than towards the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. One last comment, Councilwoman Hall.
Yeah, I just, I think I agree with Mr. Shishka, too, in limiting some of the options. But, you know, also, you know, as to your point as well, we do have public comment that in our call to the public, and we're pretty much always reachable. So I know I've gotten feedback about how to spend the money, and I think it was a big talking point over our campaign, so I think we've gotten a lot of feedback, so I'd hate to see that delay it. Did you say that Bill Valley Field is like a $90,000 improvement?
I believe 80 for some network out there.
80,000.
Yeah.
Is there any way that we could make that a priority before baseball season started for some of our families? I mean, it's only 80,000 out of 5.
You guys are the council.
Would the work get done in advance if we were able to?
It's up to us. Just kidding.
It's an R and R, it's a revolutionary place, so it's probably 45, 85.
So if you guys were to agree in principle by the end of this month, or the end of next month, you probably could get it done before baseball season.
I just think that would be, and it's such a smaller, it's a, you know, it's not a million-and-a-half-dollar fire truck, but it just seems like it'd be nice if it's something that council can do to make it better for our families, not do it during baseball season or wait.
Jolly noted. We have a public comment, city clerk?
We do.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate council's concern about having a lot of projects on the menu plate for the public, and what I'd like to suggest to you is that you come up with criteria for how you will look at these projects. For example, it seems like public safety might be one of those. Certainly, using money one time would be another one. In a short time, I haven't coming up with others, but if you came up with three or four top criteria, some of those are going to weigh pretty heavily compared to others, even though I would like to have a lot more hiking trails. I think something that contributes to public safety should have a higher priority. So if you want to frame this to keep the public from going crazy, I would suggest that you come up with criteria so all of us understand what your thoughts are and can support what you choose as projects. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, we will move on to the next agenda item. So Amendment of City Code 8-2, City Right of Way.
Thank you. All these tall people. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Rowich, Public Works Deputy Director. Let me just get the right one going here.
And good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Craig Gossett, Public Works.
Do you want to introduce it?
So this afternoon, this item is to discuss and a presentation regarding proposed amendments to the city code, Chapter 8-2, Right of Way. So what initiated this was when we were working on a franchise agreement review during 2021, and as we were going through that document, and we start talking about timeframes associated with franchise agreements, when we're starting to talk about 20 or 25 years, and how do you have requirements or expectations in a franchise agreement that are you have requirements or expectations in a franchise agreement that are going to be good for the community for 25 years, for instance? So we started looking at then, how can we manage this in another way? As well as it has the ability to set performance criteria, set standard guidelines for all organizations that we deal with as far as franchise agreements with other utility companies and/or contractors working within our right-of-way within the city. So this would create that set of standard guidelines, also get the performance criteria so everyone knows what's expected from it. And ultimately, then it has the ability to protect city investments, i.e. our streets when we do full, you know, reconstruction of streets and/or even preservation methods. And then here, short after, we've had situations where those assets get cut. And then so it immediately degrades the condition of it and the life expectancy of it. So this is a means to manage and/or reduce those negative impacts. So that's some of what we're trying to accomplish going into this and how we got to this. So if we can go through the presentation, then I'm sure we'll answer questions as we continue through the presentation.
All right. So the... We're not amending all the sections of City Code 8-2. Primarily, we're going to be looking at application requirements, permits, as they're... We're going to recommend that they be issued to the owner or the company and not the contractor in order to make them responsible for completion of the work. We're going to be talking about the responsibilities of the permutee, the construction and relocation of existing facilities specifically related to capital improvement projects, the obligations of the franchisees in those instances, mainly performance criteria and timelines. We'll also be talking about a new fee, a pavement restoration fee, which would apply to new streets that are less than five years old. That information has been posted on the city's website since December the 23rd. And we're also going to be talking about inspections of work and cease and desist orders, which is something that we haven't had a strong enforcement capability up to this point. We do have civil and criminal actions that we can take, but those require going through our city legal department. There's a lot more involved in that, whereas the ability to go out and simply ask someone to secure an area and leave the area while we work out what's happening is far more advantageous for the city. So those are the things we're going to talk about here in the presentation. First of all, who can apply for a permit? Permits should be issued to the owner or the company and not to the contractor. That will make the owner of the property responsible for the completion of the work and the work to be done in the manner in which it was permitted. Information on the permit is more clearly defined, and we've also more clearly defined the process for the review and the issuance of a permit, including the requirement for a traffic control plan, which is one of the most essential elements of someone working in the city's right-of-way. For larger projects, the applications will be accompanied by construction plans or engineered plans, maps and sketches. This would not apply to emergency work or routine work. This is primarily focused toward relocations of utilities as a result of a city capital project. Substantial changes would only be allowed with written authorization of the city. Also, the city encourages citizens and utility companies to get permits within the right-of-way so that proper pedestrian and vehicle traffic control is implemented for public safety. Not all safety is related to vehicular traffic. Sometimes it has to do with pedestrians walking on the sidewalk, being given ample notice that a sidewalk ahead might be closed so that they can take another route. The changes will establish that a window of time has to be identified on the permit. Permits may not permanently restrict block or interfere with traffic. Road closures in the city are rare. We do that as a last resort. We never like to close a road, but when we do, we limit the duration and the time of those to minimize disruption to traffic. There would be new processes for failure to complete work after a 30-day notice. Itemized cost to the city to secure the area would be applied to the permutee in that particular case. Emergency work that's done in the right-of-way, we would give the applicant up to four days to come in and get a permit. After emergency work was performed, we do realize that emergencies happen, there are failures, they may need to take care of that right-of-way and then come into the city after that. Any work performed has to be in accordance with our adopted codes. We do have general engineering standards, and we have extensive codes also in Chapter 2. There is no excavation can be left unfilled or uncovered when a trench is unattended. We do require plating when they trench in the right-of-way and then they have to come back later, they have to plate that. Advanced notice to affected residences. That's something that we do on the capital improvement side, but they don't necessarily do when they're working in our right-of-way. Inconveniences to the public should be noticed to the public in a timely and efficient manner so that they can make alternate plans. Additionally, work hours for work in the right-of-way is limited to 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. I was asked in advance of the meeting about a guarantee, what the difference is between a guarantee and a warranty, so I wanted to address that question for you. A guarantee is basically the posting of a financial assurance, which we do require in some instances based on the type of work and the extent of the work. But the warranty is the two-year period of time in which the contractor warranties their workmanship from defects or damages. So during that two-year period, if anything was to happen to anything they built, they would have to come back at the end of that two-year period and put it back to the same condition it was on the day we accepted it as complete. So 8-2-10 is a major component of the change that we're proposing as it relates specifically to franchise utility companies. Often times, these changes come about because of a public improvement project that the city's doing. In order for us to do our improvement, widening of a roadway, replacement of old infrastructure, we ask our franchise utilities to either relocate or perhaps move their existing or put in new infrastructure of their own while we're replacing or upgrading that facility. There are some exceptions to relocation, the city requiring that the franchise utility relocate their infrastructure. Those exceptions relate to when they have their easement that pre-existed the city having a roadway. So there are some instances where that occurs, and we deal with that on a case-by-case performance. In the case of design performance criteria, within the code, we are recommending language that requires that within 30 days of written notification from the city that the licensee give the city a utility map of where their existing utilities are located in the project area. Within 60 days of written notification from the city, they must respond in writing that they would need to make changes or replacements or not. They don't always have to relocate or move their infrastructure, but most times they do. Yeah.
So also in regards to franchise utilities, when we're doing our CIP projects, we also try to avoid the conflicts as much as possible. We try to be good partners that way and not just, you know, design something that creates all kinds of conflicts and expense for them, because ultimately it also impacts our residents because it expands the size of the project and the amount of construction that's required.
Finally, if relocations or replacements are identified as part of the review, then the applicant, within 90 days of written notification, would supply plans to the city about the final design and how that would occur. Now, this might appear that the city is giving them 30, 60, 90 days immediately, but a lot of time passes between the 30-day notification, the 60-day notification and the 90-day notification. The city's design processes generally take six to 12 months, and these 30, 60 and 90-day notifications would take place during that year-long period of time. As we're designing the project and we reach different levels of the project, we would give them additional time to meet these criteria. And I also... There's also some language in there, Matt weighed in, that if there's a conflict between city code and an existing franchise agreement, that the franchise agreement would supersede the city code. Sorry. So in 8-2-11, we talk a little bit about cutting the pavement in a street. What is a new street? What does that mean? A new street is defined as when it's first constructed, when it's reconstructed, or when it's rehabilitated. When we reconstruct a street, that's everything from the subgrade up. The asphalt, the subgrade, the sidewalks, the curve, the gutter, everything. Essentially, it's the same as a new street, it's just replacing an existing street. Rehabilitation can include things like mill and overlay or anything that replaces the top layer of the street, the existing asphalt, or anything at the top surface of the street. The amendment is suggesting that there be no street cuts for a two-year period. There are some exceptions to cutting the street within the two-year period. An emergency which endangers life or property, interruption of a central city service. If someone's sewer line isn't draining from their house, we're not going to tell them they can't cut the street, right? They have to put in a new sewer service. So those are considered an essential service. But when there's... Or when there's no other feasible means of providing service, there may be another way to provide a service within a particular area. So when those requests come in, we'll look at, is there another way that we could achieve what they're trying to achieve without cutting the street within the first two-year period?
When Councilman Tenney has a question.
Yes.
Just on this, in our neighborhood, recently, one of the roads was rehabilitated. The city did a great job making it look super, and there was a property owner who decided to build adjacent to that street. They had to do a cut there. In that case, for this new construction of a home, frankly, it was a mess, but I feel like, wow, a person couldn't build for two years. Would that fall under your third bullet point at the bottom in terms of exceptions?
When there's no other feasible means.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Although when we reconstruct streets, we try to anticipate that there might be future development and put stub outs to the property line for utilities. So we try to anticipate that in advance, but we don't always know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So what are the exceptions? When we grant an exception to cut the pavement, what does that mean? Well, if it's within a year of constructing the street, there would be specific requirements for replacing the asphalt if it's within one year of us constructing or reconstructing the street. The permutee would have to rehabilitate the street through mill and overlay, the full width of any lane impacted by the cut. If it's an arterial street, it would be a minimum of 50 feet in both directions, and any other street, collector or residential, would be a minimum length of 25 feet in both directions from the area of the cut. So I think that kind of goes to your question, Councilman Tenney, within one year of construction. If they cut into, attach to, or break the sidewalk, it would require a full panel replacement of any sidewalks that are damaged as a result of any work they did under the permit. So I thought it would be interesting to show you a couple of areas where we have some... Done some significant roadway, new roadway, roadway rehabilitation and reconstruction. This map here is in the airport area. Anything that's red is less than a year old, so this portion of Wilkinson Drive was just recently completed within a month. But here on the south end, that's in the one to two-year range. So they wouldn't be subject to mill and overlay, but this section would be if anyone cut the road here. On Corsair, let's see, where's Corsair? Right here. It's similar in Corsair on the south part, it's one to two years old, but everything from this point north is all older than five years old, so they would be allowed to cut the street there. Sorry, this mouse is a little touchy. Here's another area of town. This is in downtown. Montezuma and Gurley, here's your references, Gurley and Montezuma. This is Charlotte Hall Museum right here. So you can see the city reconstructed, all of these streets, Summit, Beach, McCormick, part of Goodwin, Spring, Bridge, Pioneer. So none of these streets would be allowed to be cut, or they would have to be mill and overlaid within the first year, as well as pay the pavement restoration fee. Over here on Carlton, this street is about two to three years old, and the other streets in the area are over five years old. So the city will use its IMS mapping system to determine which streets in the city fall within the one to five-year range and those that are older than that, so that when permit applications come in, we can easily and quickly see which streets fall within this guideline and which do not. So we are recommending the adoption of a pavement restoration fee, as I mentioned earlier. The fee would be based on the age of the pavement, starting at zero to one year, then moving from one to two years, two to three years, and three to five years. There's a base fee involved in each fee, as well as a per-square-yard fee. That's how asphalt's typically priced, at a square-yard fee. That's pretty standard in the industry. Does anyone have questions about the fee?
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I guess I have a question. Given in a lot of other areas recently, we've heard about the increasing costs that are being faced and other elements, is there any concern about this... These costs not keeping pace with the rise of expenses going forward? Or, you know, in terms of, we're basically codifying with this a certain price. Is there any consumer price-based index adjustment on any of this?
So you are correct, Councilman Montoya. A lot of fees in the city are established, and then they adjust based on a consumer price index. But in this particular case, the materials used in asphalt replacement are... They fluctuate wildly.
Sure.
So staff didn't feel that that was the best way to address this particular fee. It should be addressed more on what the market is, what the market is bearing at the time, and we do amend fees from time to time. That's pretty standard for us.
So there's the capacity within this framework to adjust the price down the road, like six or seven years, pricing has changed?
Absolutely. We bring that to council and for consideration, but yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Rusin.
Excuse me, I just have one question. I agree, it seems like every time you do a new street, everyone has to go out there and put a cut in it a month later. I mean, it's just mind-boggling. To prevent that, is there any way that, before you do a street, you can let people know ahead of time, hey, if you're planning on some construction, you know, we're going to be doing this street, you know, we just want to give you the heads-up to do your cut now in the old street?
Mayor Protem, it's part of all of our capital improvement projects. We have extensive neighborhood and public meetings with property owners well in advance as part of the design process that takes over a year. So you're not wrong. It seems like, you know, somebody didn't realize they were going to have to do something, but, you know, that's why we have these other conditions and these other standards, so that if it has to be done, we can preserve the integrity of the street to the best of our ability since it's new. You know, we like streets to last at least 20 years, so...
And maybe if there's some consequences, maybe people will think first.
Well, as I said, unless it falls under the... One of the exemptions, we would always look for an alternative to what they're trying to do first.
Okay, thank you.
And Gwen's absolutely correct in regards to our major projects, reconstruction, mill and pave, such that way. As I think about all of our projects that we do, though, there's probably room for us to do a little bit better there, like when we're doing pulverizing paving. Don't think we've had the extensive public outreach there, and we can maybe expand on that in order to help.
Okay, thank you.
So this fee would be added any time a permit is required to cut into...
Excuse me, Gwen. Councilman Shishka had a question.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know, is one of the drivers of the changes in this policy, Robinson Drive?
Yes.
Thank you. And could you explain a little bit about what happened on Robinson Drive?
Robinson Drive project was... Had... The contract was granted, construction was started, and then at that point, then we were notified of major dry utility conflicts. And then as those dry utility conflicts were being worked on, it created... it created over a year-long delay in the middle of our project while they were designing and working on and moving those utilities, or making the corrections to their utility that they felt was needed, so.
Did you have a problem with the utility companies not filling in street cuts or not doing it in a timely manner?
Being that, as pieces of it came up, like the first block, right off of Gurley. When it came up, we were given a schedule of like two or three weeks to do it, and it took over two or three months. So, yeah, there was significant challenges associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Just making sure, no more questions. Okay. So this fee would be added whenever a permit is required to cut into, open bore, or attach to, or make a break or disturbance in the street pavement. The fee is as a result of the reduced life cycle of the pavement. And as we discussed, it's not necessarily tied to a CIP adjustment like other fees. The two-year street cut prohibition is in place to preserve the integrity of the roadway for damages primarily due to water penetration. Water is not our friend when it comes to asphalt. The fee would be paid at the time that a permit is issued. However, if the applicant were to install less, or have to have less of an area of pavement restoration, the city would refund the difference once the work was completed and verified through inspection. So as far as the inspection of work, during the construction, the city inspects all trenching, backfilling, street and pavement cuts, and any other work deemed necessary by the city engineer. Although I will say that not all right-of-way permits are for pavement work. We use right-of-way permits for a variety of other things as well. Before beginning any work, the permittee has to notify the city at least 24 hours in advance of when work will commence. And upon completion, notify the city so that we can go out and inspect and make sure that the work is complete and the city and right-of-way have been restored to its driving condition. No work is deemed complete until the notification of completion is given. So as I mentioned earlier, we've added some new language related to cease-and-assist orders. The city can order any and all work to be stopped. Primarily, that happens when someone is working without a permit and without proper traffic control measures in place. And we feel that the traveling public's safety is at risk. We do that on an informal basis now. We have six construction inspectors that go out. They're on the streets all day. If they see that sort of work, they'll stop and ask to see the permit. Some of this language will require them to have the permit on-site at all times so that they can show the construction inspector that they indeed are acting under a valid permit. As far as commencement of work, the completion of the work has to be within the time specified in the permit, or they have to request an extension of time. Every right-of-way permit has a start and an end date. They must complete within that time period so that the city staff can ensure that, again, the traffic control's in place during that time and that the street is returned to its original condition at the end. If the permittee abandons work in the street and does not complete it, the city can come in and remove those items and restore the street to its original condition. Abandonment would be presumed if the permittee does not remove their property within 180 days after the expiration or termination of the permit. That's new language that we'll be adding to the code. That's a general overview of the changes to Chapter 8-2. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We have not received any public comments to date. We do have it posted on the website as a public notice because of the new fee that we're attaching to it. That's been up since December 23rd. And it must remain up until February the 22nd, would be the soonest council could act on this code amendment. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Montoya.
Gwen, thank you for the thorough presentation, and you as well, Craig. I just had one question, going back to something you mentioned that Matt had weighed in on. Franchise agreements superseding this city code amendment. And I guess my question is, is there, have we done a review of the franchise agreements we have with the two other, or I guess, two other utilities that exist? Or maybe three that exist that are doing? Is there any concern about limitations within the franchise agreements as it relates to this code amendment?
I do not believe there are.
Conflicting language in the amendment?
No, we didn't recognize any conflicts, but just hedging our bets at some point in the future if there is an argument to be made. Obviously, the priority of agreements is going to be that agreement that was approved by the voters.
Right.
Which is the franchise agreement. Presently, Craig, we've got the UNS gas franchise and the APS electric franchise. Are there any others?
And there's going to be phone and cable?
Which tend to be, cable at least, tends to be governed by state statute now.
That's correct.
Our hands are sort of tied on that.
They're not actually franchisees technically under state statute.
So, yeah, we basically have two agreements.
Two, okay.
And the rest, of course, are city utilities.
Right, right.
Wastewater and potable water infrastructure.
I guess, just my concern is, just knowing if there's something that we, you know, I guess, if there's a loophole in a franchise agreement that this doesn't solve, it'd be nice to know sooner than later, from my perspective.
And some of the things that we had in mind, like where we have in here, if they have to pay for a certain type of permit, the franchise agreement may say that they don't. So that's where we needed that in order to have those things covered.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And just so you know, we weren't completely off the reservation on some of these changes. We looked at, what, the city of Chandler's?
Several.
Yeah, several cities throughout the state to see how they're handling these issues. And we're pretty consistent with those. And those are agreements that the franchisees, like the gas company and the electric company, have already kind of, they know they're operating under those codes.
Yeah, definitely. We can't say that we've invented this wheel. We went and found information about this, about pavement restoration, how fees were set up and such for that, from other communities.
Mayor Protem Rusin.
Thank you. I just have a question about the abandonment. It seems to me that six months, 180 days, seems to be pretty generous. If a site's been abandoned and there's equipment and structures left in the right-of-way, is there any way that could be tightened up to maybe 90 days? Is that, or is 160 usually the, or 180, is that usually the standard?
Well, we found that to be the standard in the other communities that we polled for this, but there's no reason we can't have whatever number is appropriate for this community. If you would prefer a lesser amount of days.
Yeah, 90 days, three months, you know, should give them plenty of time to clean up the site and get their equipment out of there, or else we'll do it for them.
We can make that change?
I would agree. I don't think there's any reasonable justification for anything beyond that. And if there were, and they could justify it, then there might be an agreement to a short extension.
Okay. We'll make that change.
All right, anything else? Any public comments?
Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I'm Sandy Griffiths with Yavapai County Contractors Association. Our amendments that we were just speaking about, that Ms. Roach had been explaining to you, this was first brought to my attention when I called Public Works after our last meeting, study session on the water policy. And Ms. Gwen shared with me that there was a change to this chapter, and it was posted on the city website. That was two weeks ago. That was the first I had heard of that. And I guarantee you that these contractors and industry partners that are so definitely tied into these changes are not sitting at their computers waiting to see what new policies have been posted on a city website. They rely heavily on communication factors going back and forth. And we have, through the years, developed a wonderful partnership with the city of Prescott for communication. For some reason, this somewhat failed. So the franchise utility process, thumbs up. Perfect. Move it forward. The other aspects of this change pertaining to the performance criteria and issuing the permits to the homeowner for some major work need further discussion. This is not a one-size-fits-all change. Just like the discussion you had maybe 30 minutes ago on the COVID dollars, going out for public comment, getting questions back and forth, I ask you today that this study session and this policy being presented to you, that we put together, what we do so good at, is a partnership meeting with Public Works where we can hear from these companies that do this work. They have to have input to this. Some of the changes are not applicable. And if a contractor cuts asphalt, cuts city assets, and they tie in correctly, there should never, ever be a problem. And we've had many cases where there have never, ever been problems. So I'm asking you to let us huddle, gather, bring in some of the major players, talk about it, and then come back to you, like we have done, building codes, fire codes, wooey codes, and stand before you and proudly give you a thumbs up to accept this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor, Mayor Protem Rusin.
I agree with Sandy. I think that they should be given some time to take a look at this and review. It's kind of like with the ductile iron, the change to ductile iron. We had a meeting of the minds and made some constructive improvements. So, you know, I'm all for supporting that.
Well, I would tend to agree with that. I know that I was involved in the negotiations with Unisource and their franchise agreement because some of the one-sided authority about when they could pull off their crews and how long they would be off. And in the meantime, you've got open excavations that are dangerous. And it took a long, long time to get them back working. Clearly, there was a need for an upgraded agreement that would be more beneficial to the city. So I think some of these proposed changes are justified. But also, I think having the contracting community have an opportunity to weigh in on what the impact would be on our local contractors, what the homeowner's responsibility is, not only in small cases, but sometimes in larger projects. I think it's only appropriate that we hear their concerns and potentially accommodate them before we change this policy within our codes. I don't think there's a particular need for emergency or rapid adoption of it. So with that time, I would recommend that we do have a meeting and hear and consider their concerns.
And as I mentioned earlier, Mayor, the soonest we could even consider bringing this back to you is the end of February. So we'll meet with YCCA and hear their concerns and hopefully answer their questions, and we'll bring this back to you at a future date.
Excellent. Do we have any other concerns or comments? Thank you, Gwen. We'll move on to the next policy meeting. I know we have just about two hours to get through this. And I just want to emphasize again, our intention is to complete the review of each one of these policies so that we can have this final draft available for public comment. And then we can do some final tweaking to it, if you will allow me to use that word, so that we can have a policy we can adopt and then enact and move forward. So with that said, Gwen, do you want to kick it off here? I know we got through, I think, Policy 7 at the last meeting. So I think we can skip some of the foundational material, move into those new additional policies. And I would hope that everybody on the council has taken the time to review the previous policy, the new policies, and keep the comments related to each one of these policy statements. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we covered Policy 7, but I just want to make sure before I move forward. Policy 7 has to do within the event that a property applying for water service has an existing entitlement to water in a reservation or contract or other historic agreement, that they must fully utilize that entitlement before the city would consider approving additional water for the property. Does anyone have any questions about Policy 7? Additional comments or questions? Okay. Policy 8 has to do with redevelopment of property where there was previously an existing use. However, the new use would result in less total water usage than the original use. In that event, redevelopment, in the event that a redevelopment requires more water than its existing use, it may apply for additional water following the then-current procedures in the water management policy and the then-current water budget. So we have had a few instances where we've had existing properties where they removed the original use and they brought in a new use that actually had less water usage than was originally there. And did not feel that they should have to request water since they were using more than was previously reserved for that parcel. Are there any questions about Policy 8?
Mayor Protem Rusin.
Thank you. I have a question. Would that include, do we have something, some language about transference of water to other parcels?
We don't have language specifically that would allow it or not allow it. We don't have language that would, you know, exclude it specifically. But that's not the way that our procedure and our policy reads. If a new use comes in, it must make an application. So they couldn't transfer?
Yeah, because that seems to be happening pretty common, where there's like some water that's not used on one project and then it gets transferred to some adjacent.
I'm not aware of that ever happening, Mayor Protem. But perhaps I'm misunderstanding your question.
Okay.
We would not unilaterally transfer water. Any project that's in contract, that has an existing contract, also has a legal description. So there's a boundary of land area in which that water could be used. Perhaps that's what you're referring to. But it would not be allowed to be moved from one existing contract into another existing contract, or even a property that does not have a contract. That would never be allowed under an existing contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on 8? Okay. Policy number 9, and this one is particularly important. Any property that holds a reservation contract or other historic agreement within the city to receive water would not be required to submit a water service application. They have an existing contract. These requests would be tracked administratively by the staff and presented to the Water Issues Subcommittee or the council biannually as a discussion and information item only. So this would apply to projects such as Deepwell Ranches, AED, Prescott Lakes, The Ranch. We have several very large developments that have existing contracts that have specific performance criteria within them for those developments and limitations on numbers of dwelling units and/or how much water they can actually use. So those projects are already governed through those contracts. Staff felt it was implicitist to bring those back before the council and the Subcommittee for Approval when they already have the right to do those things through a contract. But at a staff level, we do track those. Each time a project comes in with another phase, another plat, another piece of it, we track those in our own spreadsheet. we track those in our own spreadsheets, and we're happy to share those with the public and the council on a regular basis if that's the desire of the council. So that's what this Policy 9 is about. Any questions on Policy number 9?
No, I would just say having those biannual reports for the Water Issues Committee should be appropriately sufficient, and if the committee feels that there's a significant component to that report at some point that the council needs to consider it, they could recommend that it come to a council for a review.
Moving on to Policy 10. Water shall only be approved for new development projects that will return 70% of more of the water sold as wastewater to the city water reclamation facilities. All such qualifying projects shall connect to and be served by the city sewer system, prior to physical delivery of any water service by the city. So in this case, for new residential, it's quite easily attainable to receive 70% back because of the low water fixture requirement under the building code, as well as the low water drought tolerant plant listings that we require for landscaping here in the city of Prescott or for any city water user. Citywide, the city reports at a 65% return rate of wastewater, but that includes unsuared homes, businesses that may not return as much water. This particular policy would give you some latitude in the area of commercial request for water, where they would have to show that they would return 70% or more water back to the wastewater system as part of their commercial request.
So what happens to the other 30%?
The other 30% that doesn't come into the wastewater stream, it's usually used for outdoor watering, water losses through system breaks, and as I said, there are homes in the city that are on septic, not sewer. So that's the other 30%.
So if we're delivering potable water to a development and they're on septic, then the 70% is being returned, it's not going into our system.
So if a development came before you, a new development came before you with septic systems, they would not be able to return 70% because they are using septic systems. That is correct. So they would not meet the criteria.
It's not a septic issue. Then they're only required to return 70% of what was delivered back as wastewater.
That's the minimum.
That seems like a very large percentage of water that is being unaccounted for.
I'd like to make a comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
So no comment on that or what?
So I can give you my thoughts on that. Currently, the city has some wastewater return flow meters located out in the Granite Dells area. We were unsuccessful in achieving what we felt was an accurate measurement coming through those wastewater flow meters, either as a failure of the meter itself, the impacts of construction flushing through the lines. We actually were recording higher amounts of wastewater going through the wastewater stream than we were selling through the water meters. So we knew at that point that the meters were not accurately reading, and we attempted to correct that. We went to the manufacturer of the wastewater flow meter. They recalibrated the meters. There was considerable internal discussion between our utilities manager, Eric Bay, and the Public Works Director about whether that was the best type of unit to be using. And we are now in the process of designing a, what will be in the future, a standardized flume-type wastewater flow meter system for each one that has to be installed in the future. When you introduce solids into a flow meter, it has a high rate of error. That's the best way I can describe it to you because I'm not a wastewater person either. So we are attempting to replace the three wastewater flow meters that are currently out there, as well as the fact that Granite Dells Estates isn't quite built out yet. They're building in Phase 4 now, and pretty soon you're going to see Phase 5 come in, and they'll complete Phase 5. They're probably within a year or two of being completely constructed, at which point construction flushing, using water for construction flushing will no longer be occurring. We will have replaced the new wastewater flow meters, and at that point, we feel we could give you a more accurate assessment of what new construction homes is returning to the wastewater stream after it flows through the water meter. But until that occurs, it would be difficult at best for us to tell you, even new construction, what the percentage of wastewater flow returns are at this time.
So this is primarily just to monitor large subdivision-type developments?
It is.
Because you can't really measure individual homes when it comes to wastewater.
That is correct.
You've got to be able to collect this all in some type of a collective pipe or something, and then you can measure that against what was delivered to come up with that percentage.
That is correct. We feel at this time that 70% is an achievable number. That number may go up in a couple of years once we've corrected these items and we have actual data to bring to you.
I think we probably could expect that modern construction would be able to provide a higher number than 70%.
That would be my hope.
And this policy really should reference subdivision or larger developments, shouldn't it?
So you would like it to only apply to residential development? I believe there could be some benefit in it also applying to commercial uses. However, commercial uses bring other...
We have some very, very large water delivery projects, and being able to monitor how much is recovered from their use, I think, is very important. Maybe this policy needs to be split into a residential, non-residential component, and then be able to be defined for larger subdivisions for residential and then some other measurement for commercial.
And that was part of this also was on the commercial side when we were considering this. We have other means to regulate agriculture activities, so we don't have that danger. But for instance, we could have a chip manufacturer want to come in here and set up shop, very high water usage, and it would not be returned water necessarily either. So it's things like that that we're trying to protect the water, our water portfolio and the water that we have, from some of those things that could be very high water use with very little return.
It looks like Policy 10 needs a little refining.
Yes, we'll take your comments into consideration. We'll split it into two separate policies.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my questions, so if a person comes and they're building their house and they don't have access to our sewer system and they are in city limits, is this including them?
So there is an exception under City Code 2-1-76 that says that if your parcel is adjacent to or budding a sewer main, you must connect. New construction must connect. If you're not adjacent to or budding a sewer main, you're not required to extend the main or, you know, bring sewer to the parcel for new construction. But that is in City Code 2-1-76.
Okay, so this policy wouldn't override...
It would not override. It would not supersede code.
Okay.
Councilwoman Moore.
Just a quick comment on this policy, and I'm sure it's addressed in another policy. I missed the previous meeting, but I'm wondering if it should also have a notation that talks about water or new development projects within the city limits versus outside. I mean, I know we're talking about not delivering water outside the city limits, but I think maybe that should be included in this because it says any new development projects that will return. So that would be not just within the city limits, but without the city limits if we were to agree to deliver water outside of city limits for projects. This kind of goes to the Stringfield Ranch issue where we were looking at providing water there and capturing that water, and that project eventually didn't go through with the city.
Well, water delivery outside city limits for new projects is covered in subsequent policy statements.
That's why, like I said, I wasn't here at the previous meeting. I just wanted to make sure it was included in this.
You should hear about that shortly here.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. I just would like to remind everyone that we have a water service area boundary map where we do have, we've historically served water outside the city limits like to Mountain Club and Okagan. And so I think we should modify that to within the city limits or the current water service area boundary. And then also, oh, I'm sorry, that's in Policy 9 and Policy 10. And then this 70% number, why can't we just say we'll return all water sold as wastewater? Just say it's all got to be returned, no matter, you know, because we'll never know exactly what the percentage is.
I don't believe that that would be possible, Mayor Protem. There is outdoor watering even with drought tolerant plantings. People like to wash their own cars. We discourage that, but, you know, there are other things that people will do, so I don't believe 100% return rate is achievable.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Is it, under the current policy, do we have a percentage like that 70%?
We do not.
This is a new goal.
This is a new goal.
All right.
So that's part of the value of this is you're establishing at least a line where no line existed before. Now, the line probably should go up based on having better data, but you're going from no policy to some policy, which is really like going from zero miles per hour to 40 and hopefully you can go to 60. If that makes any sense.
So the next part of the water policy has to do with water budgeting, budgeting water for new development. Policy 11 says that the council shall set the water budget biannually at its last meeting in June and December of each year. Policy 12...
I have a question. Go ahead. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilwoman Hall.
Can you explain a little bit this water budget proposal? Do we, are we using this in practice? Is there another city that we modeled this after? I guess I don't understand the exact quantitative acre feet being used in the practicality sense.
Historically, Councilwoman Hall, the city had an established water budget annually. It was once a year, and it was a calendar year. And it was a set aside based on some criteria. Recently, with the policy changes in the existing water policy, there is no annual set aside or, in this case, a twice annual set aside. What this would be doing is going back to a policy where acre feet were set aside for development projects over the course of a six-month period of time. Now, whether or not the policy historically was based on other jurisdictions' experiences, I don't know the answer to that. Do you all know whether or not?
I don't either.
But the reference, since it was our own reference and it was a policy in place up until two years ago, or maybe a couple of years ago, right?
2019 is when it changed. So historically, we had set aside X acre feet per year to be allocated to new developments. And at any one time, any period during the time of that year, you could never allocate more than 50% of the remaining budget. And what happened was, as projects approached year end, if a large project came in, those developments couldn't proceed because they'd have to wait until the next New Year's cycle to apply for their allocation. And I thought that was somewhat arbitrary, and it restricted some really quality developments depending on what time of the year they wanted to apply. So being able to do it over a rolling six-month period, I think, allows more flexibility for the kind of quality projects we would like to see. But by the same token, realizing having a budget allows us to really have a more measured deliberation on the pace and the size and the scope of developments and then be able to monitor their phases. So some of these big ones are three, four, five, six phases in the process. So we want to, and then while those phases are being developed, we've seen some of the developments squeeze in areas, create open areas that are then sold off to a second developer. So I think monitoring this is an appropriate way of handling our water portfolio and being able to demonstrate to ADWR that we are managing our portfolio well.
So in the past, has it stopped? I mean, I guess it's hard when the number is blank, right, for the acre feet?
Sure.
Or are we trying to make a major, is the idea to only allow X amount? Or is it a higher number? Is it a lower number? The number of acre feet, I think, is to have it blank is...
Right, we have to establish what that number is going to be.
That's the key to the whole proposal, and that is a policy decision that you collectively need to come up with is what's a good set aside? What's a fair set aside for the six-month period of time?
And so over the history, was that something that was used to deny? Is that, I guess I'm just trying to understand. So now, we haven't had one for a couple of years. Before, we had one for, was going over a 12-month period. Now you're changing it to a six-month period, so it can not have to wait for an additional 12 months. I understand that.
There were instances prior to my tenure that as we got closer to the end of a calendar year, and Matt could speak to this, I'm sure Craig and Gwen, where there was running out of water.
For that calendar year.
For that calendar year. And in those instances, there were projects that were pushed into the first of the following year.
They would have to wait until a new budget became available.
Okay. And do you, does your staff or your staff altogether have any concerns about that?
Well, if the number is arbitrarily set, aside is too, too low, like, you know, five acre feet, then obviously that would be a problem, short of something being established that's completely unrealistic. No, not really.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, one of the problems that I have with this situation is back when we did have the water budget, what was happening was, is it was inflaming the public's impression of how much water we had. Because ultimately, if we were up against our water budget, what it said to the public was, "We're running out of water." And I don't think that that's true by any stretch, but what it does is it kind of gives to the public the impression that, "Oh, my gosh, the council's only allowing this much water this year. We must be running out of water."
Well, I can't speak to the fact that the public is misinformed on how they interpret that number. If they're paying attention, if they're monitoring, if they're watching, if they're attending, they'll understand what that means. But to try to establish a policy that will educate somebody who's uneducated, I think that's a responsibility of our public education system.
Well, I think that that's probably right. I think, though, that, you know, if they, if they read it in the newspaper, which, it must be true, if they read it in the newspaper and, you know, they're talking to, you know, that's what they read, and they're talking to other people, that's their education, unfortunately, and there's no background to it, is what I'm saying.
Well, maybe that's our responsibility to communicate that to the community, and that's why we're going through this whole water policy process, and we're allowing the public to have their input on it. So at least, maybe in the next year, we'll have some educated residents, and we may have to schedule an annual update to educate new residents on what this means.
I think that'd be a good idea. There's a gentleman out in the audience out there, a former council member, who was here when they first started budgeting water.
Yeah.
So he can probably give us a pretty good idea. I understand he's going to, he's going to speak after a while.
Very good. Mayor Protem Rusing.
I have a question. So what happens if we have more requests than water that's allocated for that year? What happens to those requests? Do they stay in line? Do they go away?
So Mayor Protem, those come in through a formal application process from the applicants? So Mayor Protem, those come in through a formal application process from the applicants? So staff would hold them in the order that they came in?
Okay.
And they would wait until the next budget was established for the next period of time?
In, in some instances, Mayor Protem, you obviously have people decide that they don't want to proceed if they have to wait and they would pull themselves out of the system, but that would be a self determination. We don't do that.
All righty, thank you.
And/or...
Councilwoman Montoya.
Oh, wait.
One more piece for that. So, and/or, this would be policy. This would be the council policy. So you all as council, if we went into the year, four months of the six months, and you had something come up that you felt was a very viable, important project for the city, then you as the council have the ability to review and consider that at that time.
We could grant an exception. We could increase the allocation for that period of, of the year. A lot of things that the council could make a decision on, not just this council, but future councils as well.
And as a practical reality, the application being submitted, the review by staff, putting it on an agenda, getting approval, you're talking a three to four month process in most cases anyway.
That's correct.
So allocations that are made on six month intervals, the wait time for things that are valid is going to be negligible just based on the fact it takes 90 days to 120 days to get anything over the finish line in government anyway. Well, I mean, I...
I mean, that's reality.
It's not.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you. Gwen and Craig, I guess my question for you, and I think when, when I met with you over at Public Works and kind of initially was talking to you about the draft policy months ago now, I was, I was curious if you guys have a sense of, kind of to Michael's point earlier, if we set the policy at five acre feet, that would be insane. Do you have some guidance? I mean, in terms of what's appropriate, in terms of the level of applications we're receiving right now? Is there, is there a number that you guys have kicked around or a range even?
We, we've talked about some numbers and tossed around a little bit. And, and definitely we've got to keep in mind too, that this would be separate from existing contracts, historical agreements.
Reservations.
And reservations. So they already are, those are, all three of those are contracts.
Sure.
So this is going to be other properties that do not have those. So it's definitely going to be a reduced quantity of, of properties and or parcels that, that come into play with this. We, we have, you know, thrown out there, you know, kind of wondered about, you know, 25 acre feet per six months, you know, maybe, maybe 50. Also something that we can do is we, we have our numbers associated with current demand.
Projected.
Committed.
Committed. And then projected. So we have those numbers and then the, the remainder as far as with our portfolio. So we could also look at it from that aspect and, and have a timeframe of, of build out. And then in that, that volume that is, looks to be available in the, in the portfolio, so then what could the number be over how many years to build out in order to assure that it, it goes out for that type of timeframe?
I think from my perspective, it would be nice to have kind of some, from, some range for, from you guys and also some background on that range. Not that, obviously that policy will be determined by us, but I think, you know, you guys are the boots on the ground, so to speak, in terms of dealing with these, these applications for water. So it might be nice to know what is, you know, your, your insight from the, from that end. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. I'd just like to make the comment that the mayor brought up making changes to the policy and how we could just, you know, make a change if we feel like it. And I would just like to say that maybe we should put in the policy that if any changes are made, additions, deletions, that it's be done with instead of a simple majority vote, but a super majority vote.
Your suggestion is noted.
Thank you.
Move on, please.
Have we thoroughly vetted policy 12? I want to make sure before I move on.
I think so. I mean, recommendations for what that number is right now is probably the open, open question.
And we'll bring you some options for that.
If we had 100 in there and 50 in each biannual segment, you're talking about 600 homes that could be approved. If you looked at apartment buildings at a 0.12 level, you're talking about 800 apartment units. So that's, and that's over and above what's already been approved and being built and planned and, and allocated for. So even that number, I think, would be pretty liberal in allowing growth. So, you know, we have to just decide as a majority here on where, where we want to start and then monitor that as it goes forward and either increase it, decrease it, bring it back to council for consideration. That's the all intention of this policy and potentially the ad hoc committee I want to put together to monitor the implementation of this policy so they can do some of that analysis and bring back recommendations. Okay?
Very good.
Okay, let's go to 13.
All right. 13 is very similar to 12. However, it's a water budget for new commercial, industrial, or institutional developments. Again, it would be for two six month periods. Any remaining unallocated water balance can be preserved and carried over into the next budget period. That would be at the pleasure of the council within, at the, in June and December of each year. However, all non-residential uses with a water estimate greater than one acre foot would be reviewed by the subcommittee and then council for consideration, taking into account the estimated water use as well as other benefits that may be coming to the city as a result of it being a non-residential use.
Councilwoman Hall, you had a question?
Oh, yeah, it's just in regards to policy 13. And this kind of piggybacks on Councilwoman Shishka's point, but I, I just really don't know that I agree with a, a commercial, institutional, industrial limitation on acre feet. I mean, if we have a massive employer that comes in here, it's, you know, yes, we can educate, you know, the people that are living here and we can explain the water budget is just for, you know, one-off situations, but I would really hate to give the perception of that as a deterrent to people that are coming here to build businesses and to provide jobs. And so we see growth at the airport and, and we have, you have a college and every riddle. I just, I don't think that that's appropriate for this situation. I think everything should be applied and looked at regarding, irregard, you know, regardless of a January to June, or if they came in July, you can't start till January. I just don't think that's feasible here. I mean, I don't know what acre feet we're looking at putting in there, but I mean, if we have something massive come in here like an Amazon, I just, I don't, I don't think that that's, I think they should apply and then we should decide their feasibility. Because it's, I mean, a commercial project's going to come with so many more things that, again, I just go back to jobs. Doesn't seem logical to me to have an acre foot limitation and that perception.
In those cases, commercial development normally doesn't have a big water demand. When we're having a distribution facilities like we're considering and are coming in now and some of the other larger developments we're seeing around the airport, they're usually not big, big water users. I mean, we do have a chip manufacturing company here that's been operating for a number of years. They use about 144 acre feet a year. That's a lot of water.
Yeah.
And their contract allows them to expand their facility and use another 50,000 gallons a day.
A day.
So when you do have a massive development that would want to come in and use our water portfolio, I think it's extremely important that the Water Issues Committee look at a water service allocation and determine how much and how they're about to use that water, how much is going to be recovered, how much is, needs to be treated. We even had some discussions with that particular facility about the wastewater that comes from them and, and how it has to be treated to be able to be recharged and utilized. So those things, I think, are extremely important that our Water Issues Committee look at what the applicant wants, how it's going to be used, how it's going to be managed, and make sure it fits in with the overall portfolio that we have an obligation to manage in this Prescott active management area.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree. And I think we have our, all, all of those things to be reviewed. I, they should all go through all the steps. I absolutely agree with that. But I mean, I just have concerns about, similar to what Councilman Shishka's saying about this budget, water budget. We don't want to be, like I said, especially as we're expanding the airport, there's massive amounts of opportunity just on the south side of the airport in that industrial area. And it just seems like a deterrent for businesses. We don't want people to think we're deterring them and to set a amount like that. If you're saying, well, we're going to review it anyways, then what's the point of it? I think it gives the wrong perception and I think everything needs to be looked at on a case by case basis. You know, even the one that you're, you know, referring to that doesn't use a lot of water, they do provide a lot of jobs and it is in city limits, so...
So I think most businesses, in my business experience, being able to expand your operations into a new area, it's important to know what the expectations are so you can plan for it.
Right. And I, I'm...
Leaving it wide open sometimes makes it difficult for a large operation to be able to move forward and, and be able to plan for it. So your concerns are noted. Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Once again, I just think that perception is a lot bigger than what, you know, the, the credit that we give it. And also, I don't want to be seen as picking winners and losers. So if we can formulate a policy that will make it easy to, for people to understand our total water situation and the fact that we are not picking winners and losers, particularly among like type projects, then, you know, I could support it for sure. I just think we need to find a way to do that and there's probably a way to do that.
Well, I don't think this policy is intended, nor is it written in such a way that somebody's going to be immediately and arbitrarily denied. They bring forward a good policy, a good project, they do their due diligence and come up with their expected water use, it's going to go through the project and the process and be very likely approved. But it's important to have a policy so that the business applicant and the community at large realizes that we're doing a diligent job of managing our water portfolio and the Arizona Department of Water Resources understands that we're doing a diligent job and that's why we have the assured water supply designation that we currently have. And now we're asking for a new designation that'll be twice as long as the past one. So as long as we can demonstrate that we handle our water status well, then chances of us continuing to get that ability renewed, I think, is very high.
Yeah, Mayor, the only concern that I have is that, okay, you bump up at the end of the six months, you bump up against, you know, the, you have a project that's going to, that's going to require more water than what's left in the budget. So that person goes to the next six months and in doing that could possibly bump up against almost the half of the budget that, you know, we've allocated for that six months. And then all of a sudden, you're bumping all sorts of other people. As long as we can find a way to, to not have that happen or to minimize that situation, then we're good.
Well, then it probably comes down to how we decide to allocate those numbers. I mean, boy, wouldn't it be wonderful if every major corporation wants to relocate to Prescott, Arizona? And we've got them all lined up wanting this massive amount of water and competing with each other about how they're going to be more efficient than the other guy. Those would be good, good problems to have. Whether they occur in anywhere close to a description like that remains to be seen. But we are attracting some substantial businesses here and I think they understand that we're trying to make it as accommodating as possible, but by the same token, being able to manage our impact on our aquifers at the same time. Councilmember Rusing, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I agree with the mayor. I think a well-crafted water policy will deliver a message to the public and to our future businesses that want to come here because they can be reassured that the water will be well managed and hopefully we won't be running out of it sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to policy 14, please.
Okay, so policy 14 was in a previous policy where, when we had a water budget, it says that no single residential water service application will be approved that estimates water usage greater than 50% of the remaining biannual water budget. So any, if the city council puts 50 acre feet into the budget, the first application cannot have more than 25 acre feet. And the second application cannot have more than 12 and a half acre feet and so on and so forth. So it's in the order of precedent that no user would receive more than 50%. If their request requires more than 50%, they could ask for less if their project is phased. They could come back to, at a later time to ask for water for the next phase. There are different options that they would have, but this policy would effectively limit any applicant from asking for more than 50% of what's remaining in the budget for that six month period.
Councilwoman Hall, do you have a comment on this one?
Not, mine was back on policy 13. I just, I really think that it's important that, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, people lining up and competing and I don't, I don't think it'll be a case necessarily where everybody will, commercial projects will wait. We have seen them come in and influxes during the same 12, you know, six month period. And I just, I really would ask the council to reconsider a, a commercial limitation because we don't know when these demands are going to come in and we don't know when these people are going to be ready to build and to turn away sales tax and jobs. It just doesn't make sense when, you know, if they're ready to go in January, but we're saying, no, you can't have the water till July and, you know, then deterring. And, and I don't think that they'll wait a year or two years until it's their turn. I think they'll go next door, they'll go up north of us. And I don't think that's a very big detriment to the city of Prescott and the perception that we are, I absolutely agree, a water policy, no doubt. I mean, that, not disagreeing with that, it's the budget, water budget, I think, is a deterrent for the commercial properties, which is then a deterrent for, you know, turns away our jobs and sales tax and it's just not feasible.
Your concerns are noted. Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you. I, I think if you leave in any contract a blank, it's definitely a loophole and will be exploited. Moving on to 14, it says no single residential. Should we insert or commercial? Include commercial in this one? Because it just says residential.
That's a policy decision you guys have to talk about. And one problem with that would be that if you had a larger water user from a commercial side who ate up more than 50%, to Councilwoman Hall's point, do you not want anybody else that would not? I mean, it's a little bit of a nuanced difference between this and residential. I think that you guys could discuss it amongst yourselves if this is something you would want to extend to commercial and industrial.
Yeah, I think that would really apply to what our priorities would be as a city. Do we want to make sure that we're as business friendly as we, as we can be? I think we don't have quite as many concerns in that area that we have now with some of the very large residential developments. So I think not requiring that same limitation gives us more flexibility for a more substantial business applicant.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. I could definitely support a reasonable residential situation if we could come up with that. I, I would definitely... I would definitely support Councilwoman Hall in her stance that we don't, I don't believe we need a commercial budget.
Duly noted. Let's move on to Policy 15, please.
So the next, the next couple policies have to do with existing contracts, reservations, or historic agreements. So Policy 15 is that water supplies associated with an existing reservation contract or other council action may not be amended to increase the number of lots or the volume of water used. Any such proposal to increase the number of lots or the volume of water shall require submission of a new water service application for the revised project, which will be evaluated according to the then-current water management policy and water budget. That one's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions?
Protam Rusing.
Oh, thank you. Volume of water kind of stood out to me. Would it be better to just say acre feet per year to be more specific?
The contracts actually are based on acre feet of water. That is true. We can make that small change if you would like.
Yeah.
From a language perspective, it might make more sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can just add volume of water as determined by acre feet.
Yep, we can make that change.
A fraction thereof.
Some contracts have one, some have the other, and some have both. But it would clarify, they all have one or the other.
Maybe, maybe going forward, make them more consistent, just acre feet per year in our contracts.
We could certainly do that, but that's more in Matt's world.
And we can make similar notes where volume of water is utilized, acre feet is also utilized, because I'm looking at 16, and it has the same language.
Yeah, we probably ought to use both measurements because we have existing contracts that are written based upon gallons per day rather than acre feet.
And a volume metric is a point something of an acre foot, so it's-
Yeah, and certainly going forward, we can standardize the language.
Councilman Tenny.
On Policy 15, with the exception of a reference to the water budget, is this materially different from how we're currently approaching things?
It is not, Councilman Tenny.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next.
Policy 16, when a water service agreement contract expires, the associated volume of water in acre feet shall be returned to the water resource portfolio or the original contractual reservation as applicable.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
I would like to just have the sentence "and" after "water resource portfolio" and eliminate "original contractual reservation as applicable," as if you don't use it, you lose it. I think it would keep things a lot cleaner. You don't have so many things hanging out there.
I'll work with legal to make sure that's not, that wouldn't be an issue for us, but I, at this moment, I would say that's possible. But I would like to make sure that we don't have language in one of our reservations because this language came from a prior-
This would be going forward.
-policy. Yes, but the reservations would be in arrears, so we would need to look at those to make sure we don't have language in those that's consistent with this. We'll do that.
Yeah, contractual reservation would always be in arrears.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, policies, let's see, we have, Councilman Tenny.
So is there a potential for unintended consequences if you don't, you use it, you lose it, in that you might have a developer potentially use more than was necessary so that they didn't lose it? You follow where I'm going?
So, the only instance where I've seen this occur is in contracts where we gave it to a homeowner who split the lot. And perhaps their plans didn't go forward, and they ended up not building that second house. But they had a time period in which they had to act on the contract or they would lose the water. I haven't seen a developer that hasn't fully executed the terms of their contract. They have that pretty well mapped out right from the beginning. So for the larger developments, I don't believe that's as much of a concern, this policy. It would be more for the smaller contracts where they were not able to actually execute.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anyone else?
Next. By the way, City Clerk, have we had any public comment on any of these issues?
I have a couple of comment cards here from Sandy and from Tom Riley. I don't know if you all want to speak after the discussion is done in totality, and then Leslie Hoy has had her hand up for some time in the Zoom.
Well, if you want to speak on the total policy as we go forward, that might be more efficient. But why don't we answer Mrs. Hoy? She might have comments on some of these policies we've gone through so far.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Hi, everyone. Going back to Policy 9, the one about historic agreements and then the requests being tracked administratively and presented to the Water Issues Subcommittee and/or the council biannually, I would like to see that those presented to the council. And my reason is, then, the press is usually at the council meeting but not at the Water Issues Subcommittee meeting, because I think it's important for residents of Prescott to know how much water is being given out, just as an awareness, another aspect of water awareness. And, I don't know, I guess I'll let you review that. Right now, we left it that it would go basically to the, just to the Water Issues Subcommittee, the policy says and/or, but I think it should also, it should go to the council, could go to the Water Issues Subcommittee and the council. And then, I just have a general comment I want to make on the water budgeting. We expect officials to budget money. Water, unlike money, can't be printed. There is a limited amount of water on planet Earth. That water has to last until our sun goes out and civilization can no longer exist in our solar system. From that perspective, it's essential that every generation use water as carefully as possible, and therefore, we just can't keep giving water away to every applicant ad infinitum. That's my statement on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoy. I don't think that there should be a problem if the administrative report is brought to the council twice a year, in addition to the Water Issues Committee. I think the council in general would probably like to know where that stands.
Okay.
Okay, next policy. Tom, do you want to approach?
A portion of the policy at this point right now-
Come on up.
-would be more appropriate. And Mayor and Council, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I got to tell you that 22 years ago, I was sitting there, and a lot of what I'm hearing today is exactly what was said 22 years ago. How do we make this work? How do you make the budget work? We didn't have any magic formulas back then. We also did not have a really great partner in ADWR at the time either. So be careful with that. We were accused of all kinds of things, including putting in subdivisions on the back of napkins. And when we went down and discussed that with them and showed them, that their attitude changed somewhat. But at any rate, yes, you have to develop a budget. We understand that you have to develop a budget. How you develop that budget is important. Know where your numbers are going to come from, be able to defend them, so that your city attorney can defend them when he has to defend those numbers. So there needs to be some logic and some history behind them both. The 70% number that you have there, some think it's too high, some think it's too low. Just be sure you know how you're going to measure that, because if you don't measure that and you're using that as an allocation, you can't accuse one developer because of another's shortcomings and what have you. So be careful how you manage and measure that, because again, your city attorney may have to defend that number at some point in the future. I'm saying this because I remember what happened after we did what we did. And with any budget, one of the things that we did not do that I would like to think that you are, and you've already mentioned it, is to codify your ability to talk about the budget. Yes, you have a limited amount of water as opposed to a limited amount of dollars, but by the same token, you need to codify within this policy an ability, as Mayor Protam Rusing said. There needs to be a way to make this change. There needs to be a way that you can be able to address that which you don't know about, because you don't know what you don't know. That was our biggest fear back then. We don't know what we didn't know. One of the things we did not do that I think would be important for you to consider is, again, codifying the policy on how you can change things. And I'll just leave it at that, because if you don't put that in here, subsequent councils will end up doing exactly what you're doing, and that's rewriting the policy. And I think if you want something to be able to last, you know, just like, you have to have a way of being able to modify it over a period of time. And that's one of the things that we did not do, that we're sorry we didn't do.
Tom, I have a question for historical reasons. I would like to hear just a brief explanation of what happened. You ended up in a lawsuit or something, or?
No, we were always afraid that was going to happen. We haven't had the lawsuit, but we're always concerned that, one of our biggest concerns at the time, John Moffett, we gave him fits, simply because we did not, we did not have science and logic as solidly behind our numbers and the numbers that we had in there as we would have liked to have had and we could have had. Thank goodness, we were not ever challenged on that, and you may never be challenged. Future councils may be challenged. As things become tighter and tighter, people tend to challenge them more and more. So my concern would be that when you do develop your numbers, develop them upfront in the open, make sure you have science behind them, and that you can stand behind them.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
And I know John pretty well, too, and thank you for that explanation, though I know why he acts the way he does.
Sandy.
No offense, John, wherever you are.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I wanted to discuss a couple policies before we continue to move on while they're all fresh in our DNA. So Policy 10, just what Mr. Riley said, the 70%, what happens if they don't achieve that 70%? We haven't called out any directive. Do they get their hands slapped? Do they have to go to 50%? I don't know. So I think that's something that should be looked into for an answer. Policy 12 and 13, I want to say I don't feel that they are at all accommodating. I understand the residential one. I can work with that, the city can work with that, I feel that homeowners can work with that, as long as we come up with acre feet that is acceptable to work with. And I would much rather like to see that on a little higher end than a low end. The Policy 13 for the commercial, I think, is a bad move. Let's let them in. We need commercial. We see what they're doing with their water usage. They're being mindful, and we cannot afford to turn people away, not in this state of economy that we're in, especially with commercial. So I would like to see that one removed, which I don't think is going to happen, but we should consider it, talk about it, and be good stewards. That's what we're all here for. If you don't remove Policy 12 or modify 12, and if you do not remove Policy 13, then there needs to be some sort of legal verbiage in there that could possibly grant exceptions or make modifications. The way this is written now, it's just cut and dry. So maybe that might help in leaving those doorways open with legalese where we can move forward with those. Policy 16, I don't understand, if we've already granted a water service agreement and the contract expires and/or the homeowner decides to do something else, why can't that water service agreement stay with that lot? That would be so positive and could be a potential selling point and make it easy for somebody else to come in, not have to go through Policy 12. So just a thought process. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, let's move on.
I, we have more. Peter Krupnick has had his hand up in the Zoom. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think my comment applies to 9, but it may not, and that is that there's a lot of water tied up in historical contracts. And this probably needs to go to the law department, but just wondering if there's any way to start retroactively putting time limits on some of those ancient plat rush contracts.
The answer is no, unless you want to get your butt sued. It all kind of comes down to kind of the constitutional prohibition against impairment of contracts.
Expose facto laws.
Yeah, we just have to live with, you know, prior decisions that were contractual in nature, and future councils are going to have to live with the decisions you make that are contractual in nature, so.
Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and Council, and I want to, when I put in my card, it was before Sandy made her comments, and I want to agree with what Sandy said. I wanted to clarify this 70% return requirement. My understanding is, we're not talking about what the actual return is of the project. We're talking about when they come in to apply for a project, they are presenting a proposal to the city specifying what bathrooms they have, what landscaping they're going to put in. There'll be a budget established. So then it goes to Sandy's point, if they want to make changes, then I think they should have to come back to the city. Because right now, anybody can make a change to landscaping, but if they came in and said, we're going to have low water, we're going to have no landscaping in this area, and then they start to landscape. So that's my suggestion, is that, you know, there'd be a specific proposal to the city, and I think that's already the policy, when they come in to the Water Committee to get their allocation, they need to have a, basically a spreadsheet showing what they're going to use based on certain assumptions. And if they don't apply to those assumptions later on, I think there should be a further application. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
That's all? Okay. Your backup, Gwen.
Thanks for the break. I appreciated that. Okay, so I believe we're on Policy 17, right? We're getting there. So Policy 17, water may be approved by the city manager or designee to support approved lot splits where no zoning change is required that would result in additional connections or within areas for which water is provided according to a pre-existing or historic agreement. Any request to change the zoning up or down shall not be administratively approved and subject to the process in Attachment 5. So essentially, if there is no zoning change associated with a lot split, it could be administratively approved. However, if there is a zoning change associated with a lot split, they would be required to go in front of the Water Issues Subcommittee and subsequently the council. There's an assumption in this policy that it would result in more lots or higher density.
Can you give me an example?
You're really going to make me do that, huh? So, and maybe Bryn would rather speak to this one. Would you like to speak to this one?
This mirrors the zoning administrative approval that we have already as a staff.
And for instance-
That I can do the lot splits like the zoning regulations allow. Is that correct?
And for example, like the Dexter neighborhood.
Yeah.
There's been several large lots- There's been several large lots in there that carried the appropriate zoning, and then people have come forward and they've split it and added an additional single-family dwelling unit on it.
Which is part of our regulations, as they said today, in terms of the zoning side of this equation, not the water side. You're just trying to make sure the water and the zoning are running on parallel tracks that allow for this to occur when we think it's appropriate.
Yes, and I would add that the last part of that last statement is basically incompatible with law because zoning changes are not administratively approvable. They are legislative acts by the council. So that sort of assumes that zoning can be changed by an administrative act, and it can't be.
It's kind of a fait de... It doesn't matter, basically. You're just saying something that already exists.
Don't you think that that language then should be modified to make sure that somebody reading this thinks that they have some administrative capability when they don't?
You could just end the sentence at the agreements. I mean, you don't really need the last sentence, is what we're saying.
That would be perfect. That would be clear.
Good.
Okay.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
I have a lot of questions with this one. For example, city manager or designee, whenever you have that in a contract, you need to be more specific as to, I think, spell out who that designee would. You know, it could be the butcher, the baker, the candidate.
Yeah, sure. I mean, if you wanted to be the city manager or the public works director, if there's an interest in having somebody from the public works department do it, I don't know that I'd have anybody else do it.
Yeah. And also, this Policy 17, is it still, your administrative approval would still be capped at? I don't know if we decided on the one to two acre feet.
It's whatever the acre feet cap is.
Right, it's eight multifamily for single family or one acre foot for commercial.
I just wanted to...
Yes, it would be capped at that.
Make sure because, as you know, lately, we've had a lot of problems with some historical administrative approvals that were kind of loopholes, thinking what happened with Petroglyph Point where water went from nine doctor offices buildings to over 200 apartments administratively. Thank you.
So are we suggesting that the designee reference be actually the community development director?
Or the public works director.
Works.
Yeah. Since this is water-specific, I almost think it needs to be in the hands of the water folks. Does that seem reasonable?
I'm actually going to suggest, and I apologize, I probably should have seen this sooner, but I think it should say that water may be approved administratively. This is tied to an administrative approval for a lot split. So we'll work on this language. We'll bring you something back.
Yeah, if we want to have specific positions...
That's appropriate. Let us look at it again.
It doesn't really matter.
We know what the intent is. We can probably say it a little bit better, so we'll rework this one.
Okay, good.
Okay, move on.
Move on, please, yes.
All right. So the next section is for water outside of the city limits. Water service agreements or contracts for water service outside the city limits, every water, every person that receives water outside of the city limits has a contract, historic agreement, or reservation, just for the record, shall contain performance criteria that is appropriate to the project, including a performance completion date. In the event a project does not meet the performance criteria or date, the allocation of water for the project shall be terminated.
So where would this apply?
Right now, we generally use it for CVID properties that have rights up in Chino Valley under the CVID agreement when we bought the lakes. Those folks will come in because they want to take the next step from the right to use the water into actually using the water, and so we'll enter into a contract with them to serve them under the terms of the CVID agreement. So those are the ones we primarily see right now.
So if those are the only ones that really have the authority to receive water outside city limits, I think we probably ought to specify that so that no additional applicants would think that they would have that ability to acquire water.
There may be others. I'm not going to tell you that I know all of them, but we'll look in our contract files and see if we have others. If we can specifically list them, we will. If it's a long list, we could attach it as an exhibit, something like that.
Yeah, if they're historically existing, then I think that should be described so that new developers outside city limits are assured that they would not have that ability to acquire water if they didn't fall into the described exceptions here. Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. Can you explain the performance criteria appropriate to the project?
So, for example, if sewer is available, performance criteria might be that they are required to tie into city sewer. That's not always possible, like in your case of your question earlier, but if it is possible, we would put that into the contract as a performance criteria that they must tie into sewer. We often will put time limits on a contract so that they have to perform within a certain period of time. Otherwise, it ties the water up for other projects that might be ready to go when that project is just holding on to water, and we never know when they might actually go forward. So we often will put time constraints are the biggest thing, and the other big thing is that they are required to tie to sewer if sewer is available. But there can be other performance criteria. It really depends on the project. It just depends on the project.
Okay, so I mean, I guess, so that's already an existing situation in like the waters...
We use that now.
Maybe I'm just reading it. Water service agreements for water out, sort of to what you were saying, Mayor, they already are water agreements. If they have water outside the city limits, because they already have agreements in place.
They already have an agreement. That's right.
Okay, and the criteria probably has already been set.
It's already in there.
Does that beg the question that would Policy 18 be better if it says existing water service agreements, so people understand that it's not?
We could add that word.
If there seems to be some perception that this is like opening something that isn't open, just say that this is for existing agreements in place.
Yeah, there may be new, I'm sorry to interrupt, there may be new contracts when we convert CVID rights into an actual execution. We execute their right under the contract, so it would not solely be for existing agreements.
Yeah, but there's got to be a wordsmith to that because the CVID...
Yeah, that just needs to be very, very clear.
Yeah.
Right.
It would be for existing water service agreements and entitlements already reserved, right? At some level, the CVID is already there.
It is.
Okay, so we could wordsmith it in a manner and bring it back to you, that it makes it clear that it's either an agreement that's already been done or an entitlement that's already been secured.
Right.
Is that, that's kind of what we're looking for, right?
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Thank you. You know, I don't like either one of these paragraphs, Policy 18 or 19. I think we can just be very specific and just say, we will serve no water outside the city limits in the water service area boundary, and incorporate this map as an exhibit, which is our current area, and it includes the Chino Valley area, and just say without annexation because I think this just is very confusing and is, you know, we just need to say that, you know? No water outside the city limits without annexation. And just say, you know, we currently supply it outside the city limits in our water service area boundary.
Well, I think if we clarify that description, that should be able to be applied to that. Otherwise, it's not in the city limits, so it wouldn't be eligible. If we did annex additional land, then these policies would apply as well, but at that point, they are in city limits.
Well, I just, thank you, but I just feel that we need to be very specific and not leave any loopholes.
That's what we're intending to do here. Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if we have moved on to Policy 18. I know you were suggesting combining 18 and 19, but that's what my question is specific to, so.
Want to touch on mine, too?
On Policy, so Policy 19 basically would not allow new water service agreements for water outside of the city limits except as provided in City Code 2-1-8. And there is a code amendment that would go with the adoption of this policy that will amend 2-1-8 that will no longer allow water improvement districts or special districts to have water through IGA, such as happened with Stringfield Ranch. That would no longer be allowed.
So, I mean, my question is just very, it just seems extremely, in my opinion, short-sighted to not even have applicants. I mean, why would we not even review them? Why would we just say no? Why, especially, I mean, I understand the water policy, but I don't understand us just kind of throwing this in there and it being a code amendment. Why would we not at least hear people out, even if we're going to change the standards or what? I mean, we have no idea what situations that people are going to be in when they're, especially as our city limits expand, if they do, through annexation, if we have people adjacent to us. We'd much rather have them on city water than pumping directly out of the ground unsupervised. So to me, it doesn't seem logical at all for the city to not at least hear people out.
Well, if they're coming forward with an annexation proposal, then they certainly will be heard, and depending on what their proposal is, and if we decide to annex, then the water availability would be extended to them.
Okay. But we're not going to give people any type of platform at all if they're unable to annex for whatever reason, or it just seems, I guess, as we've had it happen in the past where it's come up, and I understand there's some, you know, pain around some of the things that have happened with Stringfield Ranch and other things that have happened in the history, but I just, I can't understand the logic of just not even hearing people out to understand the situation. We could always deny them based on whatever standards we set, but why would we just say no? Why would we not even receive an application?
Well, that's a function of the policy that we're going to be adopting. So if the future councils want to consider water outside city limits, outside this policy, then I suppose they could move forward in that area. But I think we've established not only our policy, but aligning it with the city's general plan where growth is expected to be taking place, and if it exceeds or is beyond those general plan voter-approved boundaries, then that's why we're putting in this limitation. Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we need to be careful with what we're doing and certainly not say we're not going to, under any circumstances, offer water outside of city limits without annexation because that's exactly what we did. It's exactly what we took advantage of was the opportunity to offer water outside of city limits to get something we really, 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 really wanted, which was the Dells. So I think that limiting ourselves to absolutely no water outside of city limits unless it's annexed is a policy that I think is self-defeating.
Well, I think we did get to offer water outside city limits with the Dells and with the expectation and the agreement that that area would probably be annexed, but going into Section 33, which is not in city limits, and extending water there was a decision of the council and that very complex Arizona Eco Development, very, very broad agreement. And should something as substantial and monumental as that occur again, it's hard to imagine that it would, but I suppose 20 years ago or something, when Tom was on council, they probably weren't considering what would happen in the Dells and Arizona Eco Development coming forward. So I think it's pretty clear that our ability to extend and grow is quite limited based upon state land trust land, national forest land, et cetera. So I think we have to adopt a policy here that's going to be reasonable and applicable in the current expectations and the current general plan, and we'll be updating our future general plan, and we may have to adapt it to what that future general plan says. Councilman Tenney.
In terms of overall water management, are there scenarios in which potentially offering water service outside of the city might be in the best interest of water conservation? For instance, if Councilwoman Hall brought up a situation where if there were a developer that was going to go in north of town, say, there are going to be 50 homes regardless of how you slice it, would we not want those 50 homes to be on city water, returning sewer to the city to be recharged rather than just pulling from their own unregulated wells? And I understand in most cases, we'd say, well, great, apply for annexation, et cetera, but what if they're not contiguous to city limits or there's some other obstacle to that? Are there no scenarios in which we would want to consider this? It seems to preclude that completely might actually not be beneficial in terms of water management in our area. What are people's thoughts about that? Or Mayor, specifically, maybe you could address that. You've done some good thinking about this, I know, and I'd...
Well, I think it's important that we have a understandable and published policy about how we, how and where we consider growth and how we utilize our water designation to be able to provide that.
Sure.
But taking off all of the policies, just say, people can come forward with anything, anywhere, any size, any impact, opens up such a huge door that it's very difficult to be able to, be able to have a policy that our community can understand now and in the future. And that's what we're trying to do here, is establish a policy that's reasonable, that aligns with our general plan, and gives us the status that ADWR will recognize by saying the city of Prescott handles its water well, manages it well, and we're going to extend that designation to them because they have such a historical way of managing water within this AMA that we're going to allow them to have that designation. Otherwise, they take it away, and we have to be in the same position as any of our neighboring communities and being able to have to show individual projects have to apply to ADWR for their own designation to be able to grow.
Yeah, I hear that, and because I think there are scenarios in which we, water is managed better within the ADWR, potentially by servicing areas outside the city limits, although I'm very much in favor of almost everything else we've covered. I'm opposed to this particular policy, just in the name of better water management opportunities.
Okay, now we're going back to Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that we've got to sit back and say, is ADWR, are we in danger? Could I ask Craig or Gwen? Are we in danger of losing our status with ADWR because of our current water policy?
Well, our status is as a designated provider, and our policies should support our decision and order, which currently they do. As long as we pump within the guidelines and use water within the guidelines that ADWR has set in its rules as a designated provider, we meet their criteria.
So what you're saying is our current water policy satisfies ADWR?
It does.
Okay.
But we're also a designated provider because we provide a higher level of oversight than other communities where a developer may go to, directly to ADWR and apply for a certificate of assured water supply just for that development. They're only looking at just that one little piece of that area, whereas we manage an entire water service area, so we're held to a little bit higher standard.
Absolutely.
So ADWR would expect our policies to support us meeting the ADW criteria under our designation. So yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
And that was my point, is if we rescind all of these policies just to allow... And that was my point, is if we rescind all of these policies just to allow any development at any size at any time, ADWR is unlikely to consider renewing our authority to be able to manage that portfolio well.
You know, I would agree with you on that, Mayor, but also there's the situation of protecting the aquifer. Who better to protect the aquifer than Prescott, Arizona?
Well, I think we've seen a lot of leadership there, I agree.
So, what I don't want to do is to have people say Prescott's not in the market, so we're going somewhere else. It's like I said last year, or last year, last week, or a couple of weeks ago. If we shut the door here in Prescott, they're going to build right outside the door. And so I think that we need to be very cognizant of the fact that we preserve water better than anybody in this AMA, by far. And if we can impact saving of water in the future, I think that we need to do it.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Rusin.
Thank you. I just would like to use Stringfield Ranch as an example. Stringfield Ranch was outside of our city limits, outside of the water service area boundary, and it was even outside of our general plan. And yet, the previous council was willing to annex them. And it didn't happen because it needed a super majority vote. And the reason why it needed a super majority vote was due to the initiative, Citizen Initiative Prop 400, the Reasonable Growth Initiative. So it's very important to have a super majority vote for this water policy if there's going to be any changes. We need to have boundaries, we need to have parameters. And as far as Stringfield Ranch was concerned, he could have stayed out in the county, formed his own water improvement district with himself, and provided his own infrastructure, paid for his own wells, paid for his own storage tanks, assessed his own lots, but he didn't want to do that because it would have added cost to his lot. So instead, he did an end run around Prop 400.
I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah.
Let's keep it focused on this policy, and I want to move on to the next one, please.
Mr. Mayor, I understand we're running out of time, but these are a lot of policies that we're trying to push through.
We're not recognized, you're out of order. We're moving on.
So as I previously mentioned, there's a code amendment that will go along with policy, sorry, I have to look backwards, Policy 19. To amend city code Section 2-1-8, water outside the city limits, where new water connections may be made outside of the city limits only pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement, but no intergovernmental agreement for water service outside the city limits shall be entered with water improvement districts or other specially created districts. So, for example, we may enter into an intergovernmental agreement with another city or town, the county, a school district, but it would not be for special districts or a water improvement district specifically. So I just wanted to go through that because that'll come along with the policy. The next section has to do with the water portfolio overall. Policy 20. The city is committed to the long-term conservation of water resources and encourages residents both inside and outside the city to practice a low-water-use lifestyle as a way to ensure a long-term sustainable water supply for the region. And I would just note that water conservation is the number-one driving force behind the 1980 Groundwater Management Act. Conservation is key. At that time, they felt conservation was key to meeting the goal of safe yield in 2025, and the city of Prescott has come a long way in terms of water conservation. The city will continue to actively collaborate with Waterwise Community Partners and provide a water savings incentive program, which we do, including water awareness tools to bring water conservation awareness to the forefront of the community. So water conservation is a big focus of our water resource management staff, participate in public events, we're working on a website update, we hand out free water savings tools whenever we can, we provide education and outreach. Any questions on Policy 20?
Mayor Protam Rusin.
Thank you. This is a very nice paragraph, but I just don't really see where it belongs in our water policy. I think I'd like to see it maybe inserted in the general plan or put somewhere on our website. And I just don't think we need to have it in here at this time.
Thank you for your comment. Moving on.
Policy 21. Savings accrued that are accumulated from the difference between the overall volume of water allocated and the actual volume consumed by a project that was put into a reservation, a contract, or a historic agreement shall be retained in the worm as committed demand and not used to support additional development. Any questions about that?
Go ahead, Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, is this particularly looking today at Prescott Lakes where water was allocated at .35, and all of a sudden now we're looking at .17, and there's a huge difference?
Yeah, I think that has the, at the macro level, that has the largest impact, but all of the projects that were allocated at .35, when the reality is .17, cumulatively total this amount of water. And I think that the public wants to know that we're not going to retap this water that was never used to begin with. That's the point of this.
Thank you. Very good. Next.
Policy 22. Wells on any property to be served by city water must be officially abandoned through the Arizona Department of Water Resources. That's a requirement now, unless used for the continuation of ranching or agriculture prior to development and so authorized by council as part of the approval of a water service application. Any increase in groundwater allowance received for these wells shall be retained in the city's water portfolio and not used to support additional development that is not identified as current, committed, or future demand within the worm. So it does happen occasionally where someone will abandon a well and come on to city services. And when that occurs, they, the half acre, yeah, the .5 acre foot of water that's associated with that well is transferred to the city of Prescott into our water portfolio. That happens now, anytime someone abandons a well. Are there any questions about that?
No, I think we have defined the worm previously in the beginning of the policy statement. We've defined that and just didn't reference it as a WRMM.
Okay.
Is it defined at the beginning of it, what it is? If not?
What the worm is?
Yeah, well, you don't have to, but if it's already in writing, that's great. If it's not, let's have a definition at the front.
Okay, we'll clarify that there's a definition of the worm, but I believe there is, but we'll make sure.
Get used to using acronyms.
Acronyms, yeah.
Mayor Protam Rusin.
I have a question. Unless used for the continuance of ranching or agriculture prior to development, wouldn't we be better off just eliminating that and just say, you know, you're going to go on city service, you have to abandon your well? Because that, to me, looks like a pretty big loophole that could be exploited, ranching or agriculture? What does that mean?
So generally, I see that language in development agreements, like in the example of deep well, they'll continue to ranch some of their land until they actually develop it. I believe that's a carryover from that, unless Matt has any insight into that, I wouldn't know.
And I don't know, but it's probably something I want to take a look at to make sure there's not a state statute that would allow.
Something that reserves that, based on those industries historically, and you probably need to see if we can take it out. But if we can take it out, I don't think anybody cares.
Because, you know, ranchers have tanks that fill up, or if they dry up in the summer, they can haul water. They don't need to keep pumping groundwater because it's, you know, doesn't have a restriction or anything, especially disturbing agriculture. I mean, if they're out there growing turf or something, and, you know, they don't have to abandon their well, I just think that we should clean that up.
Okay.
Any suggestions there, Mr. Lamar?
The first thing we need to find out if there's an ag exemption. I mean, you know, growing up in Florida and Georgia and now Arizona, ag used to be the king, and we need to make sure that ag's still not the king on something like this. And I don't know off the top of my head, and I don't think Matt does either. If ag doesn't trump us, then I don't know that you couldn't just take out that provision unless used for the continuation of ranching or ag. You could just eliminate that, you know, half a sentence.
We'll look into that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Policy 23.
23. Any applicant for development or water service within the city of Prescott water service area may acquire and present for consideration sufficient extinguishment credits to support their development. The volume of the credit will be required to meet the calculated 100-year demand for water. The project must connect to city sewer system before water supplies are furnished. So there's some, there are some situations, again, this goes out more into the CVID area, or perhaps someone has the right to one or two single-family residences, but they would like to put three or four. They can purchase extinguishment credits within that area and bring them to the city for our consideration to accept them into our portfolio, to add additional dwelling units. Again, it's completely at the council's discretion. However, this policy would provide for that mechanism if council wanted to consider it. And that would be on a case-by-case basis. Extinguishment credits are one per year, so if they need one acre foot, they would have to buy 100 extinguishment credits in order to provide the 100-year assured water supply. So it's not cheap for them to buy extinguishment credits. They can get quite expensive if they're, if they fall short.
Well, that seems reasonable, but Mayor Protam Rusin, you might have another idea.
Thank you, Mayor Phil. Is this kind of like exchanging paper water for wet water when you were talking extinguishment credits?
So extinguishment credits are a water right held by a landowner. So those water rights go along with their land ownership, and they are registered with ADWR as having water rights that are associated with that land. And so when, sometimes the landowner desires not to use the water right, so they would potentially put it up for sale for someone else that would want to use the water right. These extinguishment credits that we're talking about would be within our AMA. They cannot be exchanged from one AMA to another, so they would be within this, within the Prescott AMA.
But we don't really have to include this paragraph if we don't want to. I mean, if we don't want to take extinguishment credits, we don't have to.
If we don't want to add them to our portfolio, they would increase our portfolio, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Policy 24.
Oh my, did we?
We're going to make it, Mayor.
We're going to get there. Last one.
We're close, so we're going to make it.
It's the easiest one to say, but it's a big, it's a big one to meet. It's the city's goal to increase regional consultation and cooperation with other towns and municipalities, with Yavapai County and with exempt well users, to help bring the Prescott Active Management Area into the safe yield. So it's a goal, maybe more than a policy, but we felt it was important to talk about goals within the policy and regional cooperation. You know, we've said many times Prescott is only about 12% of the land area within the AMA. So it's really critical that we have regional cooperation with other partners here within the Prescott AMA.
Mayor Protam Rusin.
Thank you. I'd like to see something inserted in there, like raise awareness of conservation measures. We should have the word conservation in there because that's such an important part of our regional cooperation goal. I think there's a lot of things that we could do with our neighbors in cooperating with them in kind of having a more consistent conservation plan. Thank you.
Certainly add language to that effect.
Councilman Shishka.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is one of these policies, I guess you could call it, that probably shouldn't even be in here, to be honest with you. I think it should be in the strategic plan, it should be in whatever, you know, things we try and do with other communities. We should naturally try and do this stuff. I don't think it should be in our water policy. So, yeah, I mean, they're extra words, I just don't think they ought to be in here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a laudable goal to a reference, but as far as including it in a specific city policy is probably not that necessary or efficient. It certainly will be our intention to continue to lead the area and our ability to manage our water portfolio in a responsible manner, continue to try to reduce the gallons per capita per day, et cetera. And I thought it was quite surprising and interesting to see that Governor Bruce Babbitt decided to submit a guest column in The Courier just last week, knowing that he was able to navigate a groundwater management act here in Arizona in 1980. And he's still keeping an eye on things and making suggestions. So I reached out to him, thanked him for his input, and it's kind of amazing that Governor Babbitt is still keeping an eye on things. So it just shows you how important this water management is, has been, and will continue to be. So with that said, do we have any more public comment?
We sure do. Leslie Hoy.
Just a second. Mayor, if we could, to kind of close out our presentation, I'm sure we have public comment, to close out our presentation. So we will continue to gather the public comments from today. We have all of the council comments and questions that we will put together, and then we're anticipating to bring that back, potentially February 22nd, in another study session, in order to bring forward potential alterations, changes that come out of all of the questions and comments. So that's kind of where we're thinking as far as next steps. And one other item was, it was discussed and considered to bring this to the Water Issues Subcommittee. And we're kind of looking at it that, being that we've presented it in two meetings now to the full council, don't know that going kind of backwards to the Water Issues Subcommittee is, has additional benefit. So would like direction there, sir.
As Chair of the Water Issues Subcommittee, I'd like to say, we haven't even discussed it at all, and I think that would look kind of ridiculous to the public to have a Water Issues Subcommittee that has never even discussed the new water policy. And I think there's a lot of things that we can cover and dig up. What do the rest of you think on the committee?
So, I would say, if I may, Mayor, I think you don't need to do an as extensive as a presentation as you've done over the last two study sessions at the Water Issues Subcommittee. I think at this point, and I would make the suggestion for the next time this comes up as a study session, is what I think might be most useful is for members of this council to review the policy prior to the meeting, or the revisions prior to the meeting, and then provide staff with those comments prior to the meeting so we can be a bit more efficient of staff's time and our own time. Because going through every single item and kind of going back and forth on items that are, you know, maybe policy disagreements among us is useful, but that can happen at a voting session, in my opinion.
I personally would like to see this now fully discussed policy, the comments from the council, comments from the public incorporated into a kind of a semi-final draft before it goes to the Water Issues Committee, because we're just going to be discussing similar concerns that would be more appropriate to be discussed after this final draft is put together. So that would be my concern and recommendation.
Yeah, Mayor, if I was going to take anything to the Water Issues Committee, it would be how, a discussion on how we would budget water. You know, I think that some of this other stuff is, can work its way out.
Well, that's, that could be done by the Water Committee Chairman to bring that number together for discussion and maybe bring that back to the council for recommendations of what those numbers could be.
I would agree with Councilman Shishka's there. I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, that, that helps us greatly. We will prepare that information to that and consider, and bring forward then to Water Issues Subcommittee for the March meeting then.
Oh, wait, what about the February? So it won't be the?
Excuse me. We've got 10 minutes until our voting meeting starts. I would like to hear maybe a last couple of comments from the public, and then we can take maybe a five-minute break.
Leslie, you're still able to speak if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I know there isn't really time to go into this very much, but in Policy 19, it mentions the code amendment, PCC 218. I reviewed that code amendment, the draft code amendment, and I think it's very confusing and doesn't necessarily say what it's meant to say, so I hope that everyone will take a look at that. And I think that the, the objective of that, which is C2, needs to be clearly spelled out, which entities outside the city limits could be served Prescott water and under what specific types of agreements. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Howard Mechanic.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate your efforts in the past to conserve water. This is about water. This is water policy. As far as if there's a proposal to provide water outside of the city limits to a property that cannot annex, how would that affect our water supply, our groundwater? By restricting the city to even consider a proposal that would be a very good deal for the city economically, or recreationally, or providing services to the city, by tying your hands, you are restricting our groundwater, not helping it. Because let's say there's a property outside the city limits that cannot annex, and there's a reasonable possibility that they can build 25 units, and they go on wells and on septic. We lose all that water to our aquifer. But if we took advantage of this very good deal that's being presented, that water will go into our aquifer and help our water supply. So if we're talking about a water policy here to help our water and our groundwater, it makes no sense. We need to not tie the hands of council. Some properties cannot annex. Now, there, there was a problem in the past with a development, and I don't want to get into Stringfield Ranch, but if they, if that development can build 25 units like I was talking about, and if they go in the city limits and they're thinking, "Well, we can get 50 units by going into the city," and you're concerned about that, then you work out a deal and saying, "You could build 25 out in the county, we'll let you build 25." So you're addressing the growth issue, if that's what you want to address in a water You can address the growth issue and the water issue at one time by not tying your hands, by considering whatever application comes in here, and as Mr. Shishka says, I don't understand what ADWR has to do with it. Because if the city is judicial and considering applications that are going to help our groundwater, why would ADWR take away our designation when we're helping the groundwater by allowing a property outside the city limits to connect to city water if they connect to city sewer, which is a requirement? So please reconsider that. I know three council members have already stated their concerns, and hopefully we'll get one more. Because this, this is very good policy in general, but if the motivation is to try to conserve our water, please explain how it's going to conserve our water, because it won't. Thank you.
Tom Rusing. That's it then, Mayor.
All right, well, this concludes our study session. I want to thank all the members of the council for working through this. We have a total of about three minutes left. So we achieved our goal here, and there's still work to be done, so there's still an opportunity to make suggestions before this final rough draft comes forward for consideration. We're not, we're not complete yet, but at least we've been able to work through these policy issues so that they can be released to the public for additional comment. And as Mr. Dossit said, we're going to bring this back in a, kind of a semi-final form so that we can make a decision on it. So thank you all for your cooperation. This study session is adjourned, and we'll reconvene here at 3:31.
One minute.